All right. All right. Ours is a little later than the others, but you're going to get the exact same question that everybody else got to start. So why did you decide to run in your case, run again?
Well, hey, Gary, first of all, thanks for having me on your podcast. This is this is super fun and I'm really glad that you are so involved in Trustful and you not only care about history, but you're really trying to educate people about this race. So I am running for reelection because I love Trustful. That is the bottom line. It is literally in my blood, I guess. And so as a 10th generation trustvillian on the Melton side, I am, this is more than just a city to me. This is my hometown and, and I love it so much. And so I really do want to serve. I guess a little bit about my background, I was born and raised here. My mom and dad were both born and raised here. My grandmother was actually a graduate of the first graduating class at Hewitt Trustful High School. So that's something that I'm very proud of. But I was raised by two kind of servant leaders, really. My mom was a nurse and my dad was a state trooper, an Alabama state trooper. And so you can imagine, there's not many other professions you can think of that are more selfless and service oriented than public safety and, you know, healthcare and, and taking care of others. So I saw that modeled for me growing up. I graduated from Hewitt Trustful High School in 1994 and left to attend the United States Air Force Academy. I did not know what I wanted to be when I grew up, but thankfully, because of the outstanding education that I got at Hewitt Trustful High School, I was afforded the opportunity to go to the Air Force Academy, which is like, you know, the West Point for the Air Force. You know, it's like Annapolis, but for the Air Force and now the Space Force. So went in 1994, met my husband Keith there. We both graduated in 1998 and then we spent the next several years in active duty Air Force. So they moved us around from state to state. All of our kids were born in three different states. Abigail was born in Mississippi. Ethan was born in Columbus, Ohio, and Allison was born right outside of Barksdale Air Force Base in Louisiana. So, and my husband, as I should, I guess I should mention is from Edina, Minnesota. So we have five people in my family and we are all from, born in five different states. And when my husband had an opportunity, he was a JAG, a Judge Advocate General in the Air Force, when he had an opportunity to leave, right? They, sometimes the Air Force and all the services need to ask folks to leave early or they need to get more folks. They asked these guys to leave early. He had an opportunity to, and thankfully for me, he moved us right back here. And I remember looking at houses in Vestavia and Mountain Brook and Homewood, and I just thought, this isn't, no offense to any of those cities, they are lovely. They're lovely. But I just thought, this is not where, this is not my home. We, there's really only one place we can, we can build this house. So in 2007, we moved back here and have been here ever since. And, and that's really, you know, really just watching my dad as he served as mayor for 20 years and just the, the amount of love that both my parents had for Trustful as their hometown, I think really rubbed off on me. So I tell people far and wide, this is truly the gateway to happy living. I believe it. It's, you can call it corny and I don't care, because it is the gateway to happy living. So anyway, that is why I am running for reelection.
Sounds like it was an easy decision.
It was.
I asked everybody else, it's like, did you have to grapple with it, you know? And I've gotten kind of varying answers, but yours seemed like pretty easy.
Yes, yes. I will give you an exclusive on your podcast. I will not run for reelection after this election. So I really do believe in term limits. I'm not a career politician at all. I'm still actually a lieutenant colonel in the United States Air Force Reserves and, and also serve, you know, in a contractor capacity, full time with OSD in an office called Operational Energy Innovation. So we push innovative operational energy technology out to the warfighter. That is my full-time job. But I am not a career politician. I, I truly believe in, in term limits. And I have heard people say, well, the people will, will give you your term limits, right? But, and that's true, and that's true. But even if I am successful in a reelection campaign this year, this will be, this will be the last time I'll run for council. I won't rule anything else out, but, but I do believe that you, you do have to have a lot of, you know, it's really good to have a lot of different new people get in the mix and, and care for our city. So, you know, I'll obviously find other ways to serve. But, um, but yeah, that is a decision that I have made. So you're the first to hear it?
Well, you're, you're gonna have a lot of that varying experience this year. You're the only incumbent running.
Yes, yes.
And I'm glad you said that, because I was gonna ask that when you, when you said term limits and won't be running again. And I was like, for, just for council? Are we talking other things? But you said it, you know, not ruling anything else out in the future. See what, see what time does.
See, see what it does. I won't rule it out. I will say though, that I have so enjoyed my time on council. The last five years have been such an education. And as I was sharing with you before we even started, even today, I learned something new. There's not a day that goes by that I don't learn something new about the city. And so it has been a great education to me. And I think back to when I was campaigning in 2020, and I wanted so much to save every tree in Trustful, to fix the infrastructure problem, to save every house in the projects. I mean, really, there are things that I truly, with my whole heart, wanted to do. And now after five years, I realize that, as well-meaning as that is, there are so many variables and so many things to consider and so many things that are possible and not possible for one counselor. I am truly one of five, and we are, we are following the lead of the duly elected mayor of our town. And that is what you want your council to do, right? You, that, that's what it is. So it's, it's really your one of five. And every question I get asked that starts with, would you do this? Would you do that? Would you, it is so difficult to answer those hypotheticals. And back when I was running in 2020, I would answer right away with what I wanted to do. And now that I know what can and cannot be done, I'm, I'm not quick to answer anything. But hey, I'm one of five, and I want to know all the information about the decision being made. And I want to see every option. And back in 2020, I didn't even know what questions to ask. I didn't know what I didn't know. So I could only get information and make decisions based on what I was told. I didn't even know to ask the right questions to get at other information. Now I do not have that handicap, right? So now I have, I have the luxury of being seasoned and with five years under my belt, I actually feel more confident now than I did then. And I was very sincerely motivated then, but I feel more confident now that I can serve the people of Trustful and represent their interests and really know what to do, what questions to ask, and, and really do a much better job as far as being a representative for people in Trustful on city council.
Yeah. When you're even seeing that, like, like with the, with all these new people who, who have kind of entered the fray this year, like, you know, I recorded so many of these podcasts, like, super early, like, the first one I did was with Drew Lally, because he announced so early. And I graduated with Drew. So it was like, really easy just to, to do it. And then the dominoes started to fall. And, you know, I would kind of get that vibe from, I'm not saying Drew, but just numerous people who are now running, where, you know, I want to do this, I want to do that. And over the course of really these last six months, I'll just say six months, really, it's probably been about three or four. But you've seen them even tighten up and they're, they're not even elected potentially yet. And you've seen them already kind of thrown into that fire of, oh, can't do that. Oh, can't say that. Because, you know, what, whether, whether the sky was falling or not, and it hasn't been, it's been volatile, right? You know, just different things have been kind of crazy around here in a way. And you've seen them just through a campaign, have to deal with that. And I feel like it's like, I don't know, it's kind of hardening them already before they even, before people even go to the polls, whether they're elected or not. You know what I mean? Hopefully, that's a good thing.
Yeah. Well, and, and you know, I mean, the more you know, right? So the more you know, the more you can observe. The one thing that I've been consistent on since 2020, though, is being accessible to anyone. My phone number is out there. It's 318-294-5976. Call me Trustful if you have any questions, honestly. So I try to answer every email. I try to return every phone call. I will, I will respond to texts. And if I don't know something, I will straight up tell you, I don't know, but I will find out, right? Like, I, maybe I don't know, but I'll find out. Or if you're asking, you know, some people just call just because they want you to understand their predicament or their problem. It ends up being a mayor issue, right? Like, it ends up being something that is completely out of, out of the realm of the possible for a counselor to do.
Sure.
But it ends up being a day-to-day, you know, kind of issue that the mayor can handle and that I'm happy to take that, you know, take that to him. And so that has something that, that is something that has not changed, is that I am, I try to be just as accessible as I can and share my, tell everyone, here's my phone number, call me anytime. The people who really have issues and really want help, do call. The people who just want to troll online, do not call.
They just, yeah.
They do not want to talk about solutions. They just, when they'll write something and I'll say, hey, call me. If you have this issue, call me and let me help.
No, they stay on Facebook and they stay in that app. That's the, that's the only thing they're using on that phone. I've, I've seen it. You've seen it. I try to stay away from it. I try to, I try to do what, I've said this on here before. So people who are listening to this, apologies, but Joe Rogan always says it on his podcast, where he's like, I just post and ghost. And like, I realize that I post a lot, because I'm trying to put the history stuff and right now, the book stuff. I know I'm snoozed on Facebook by half of Trustful. I know that. But I post it and then I get out of there, you know? I'm not staying behind for the comments. Like, hey, did you see that? Like, because that's happening a lot right now. Did you see what so-and-so said about this election? Sure didn't. Hey, you should read, you should read this about this person, you know, for your forum coming up. No, not gonna. I'm just gonna kind of stay in my little shadows over here, read what I hopefully need to read, come up with, what I need to come up with, and it will be what it will be. You can't ask them everything. We can't have, we can't have a Joe Rogan four-hour podcast. I wish we could, but, because we could fill it. But I've told all those people the same thing, too. If your question doesn't get asked, or if I don't ask something that you think should be asked, podcasts are easy to, and I don't mean this maliciously, but podcasts are easy to start. Start one. And you host a forum as well. The more dialogue there is, the better.
Okay. So that, that last sentence, the more dialogue there is, the better, is true. That is true. And I do think that if you were going to ask me, what is one thing that this administration could have done better? One of the answers I would give you is communication. And not that we did not try to communicate, but this council was, I believe, very respectful of Mayor Choate, right? We, and I will tell you, I, to a person, I respect and appreciate each of those counselors. Perry, Allen, Ben, Lisa. It has been a joy to work with them. And the respect that I have for them comes in seeing them do the right thing, right? We've all made mistakes and we've all made, made missteps, especially early on. There were three of us that were brand new and did not know what was going on, right? Like, we didn't know what to do. Why can't I talk to 42 News? I've got, I can say some things? No. Don't do that. So that's the thing, though. I do think that the communication can be better. I'm, I'm not exactly sure how we will fix that in the future, but that is something that I would want to focus on as one of the five. And under a new mayor, because we're going to have a new mayor, no matter what, is communicating. You know, back when my dad was mayor, we had the gateway. And it was a newsletter that went out. And when it only went out to 12,000 people, it was affordable and it was okay. And then they made a deal with the Trustful Tribune, where in the Tribune, they would have a section and it would be city news. So that cost, right? Because remember, we went through the 2008 downturn. Well, we're, I don't want to say we're there again, because we're not in that kind of time again, but we are at a time where the nice to haves are gone, right? Like, we, we have to tighten our belt. We're going to be getting rid of stuff like that. So having a newsletter is a nice to have, but what can you do? Can you improve the website? Can you improve? Can you improve a way that the, that the citizens can, you know, communicate with us? What we can't do is govern on Facebook. We cannot govern in public. The, the, all of the new folks who are running for council, and God bless them, any, hats off to anyone who will step forward to serve the public, because this is a job of service. Bottom line, it is not the me show. It is about serving others. It is about helping people. It is about solving problems. It's about representing Trustful well. So hats off to anybody who will do it. But though, all of them have the luxury of not knowing what I know and the luxury of saying all the things they would do and all the things they want to do and all the things they think they're going to do if they're elected. And I can't say anything about what we're gonna do or anything about what we've talked about or anything about anything, because I don't have that luxury, right? I have the burden of hearing something in executive session and not even sharing it with my spouse, or knowing that it will come down to a vote later on. And the first time I'm ever going to be able to speak about it in public is going to be in public, at a meeting, in a workshop, not at Ferris or not at, you know, not at church or something like that. So, or not on Facebook, for sure. So I will say that that is, when you said, you know, the more communication, the better. I think that's what you said. That, that.
The more dialogue, yeah.
More dialogue, the better. That's right. I do think that resonates. It resonates with me. I won't speak for anybody else, but I will say that even, like you mentioned, the, even the possibility of a garbage fee as being one of the ways that we, as a council and the mayor are looking or did look at how to shore up the finances as we've, as we've realized now and, and seen the numbers come in, that sales tax is going down and that we will have to diversify, you know, income streams. Even the mention of it, and that is why we have a lot of stuff going on today, right? Because it was not clearly communicated that it was just allowing the mayor to, I still have people text me today and say, you voted for a garbage fee. I cannot vote for you. And I want to be like, sir and ma'am, have you seen a garbage fee? Like, have you seen a garbage bill? There is not one. Like, I did vote to allow the mayor to go and negotiate a contract and bring it back. And then when we saw what it was, it did not protect seniors. It did not protect enough people on fixed income. It did not have a sunset clause. There was not any indication that we could stop, you know, rate increases every year. And it's not something we were willing to put on the people of Trustful. It just was not. But we had to look at it. We had to, to say, if, if we're going to tell people, we're looking at all of the options, that was one of the options. And so, again, the communication and the rollout of that, I look back and I think, I thought we did a good job talking about it, but clearly, the message was not getting through.
There were, there were some, there were some, there were some pretty gaping holes, I guess you'd say. And like, this is what I, this is what I say as someone who doesn't come to the meetings now. You don't see me there. I do watch them online, but there were.
But you watched them online. And guess what? I will take, I want our, I want our council to take credit for that. We, when we ran in 2020, several of us ran on transparency and putting council meetings online, and they are on YouTube.
Yeah. So.
I do want to say, good, good job for us.
Yeah. No, it's, it's important. And this day and age, there's, there's honestly no excuse not to. Um, you know, as long, as long as it falls within, obviously, it falls with, within governing laws, whatever, that you can do it, anybody can do that, you know? If I, if I can run a podcast with the little technical whatever I have, a city can do that. And it's good that y'all are. The thing I will say about the dialogue, whether it be garbage fees, whether it be a couple of years ago, when me writing one story took center stage about pickleball, because there was a lot of bad communication even then, whatever the topic is, what I will say is someone who used to go to, before you were elected, this is, now, this is when, oh gosh, this is when your dad's still mayor. This is 20, probably 2011 through, I don't know, 2017, 2018. I was there every other Tuesday. It's twofold. Do y'all need to communicate better and find other ways to communicate better? Sure, of course. But do people need to take an interest in the quote unquote boring stuff as well? And actually show up and ask questions and, you know, just put it on themselves to be like, how do I find out this? I'm going to go there and find out. They need to do that, too. So that's me riding the line in the middle. But anything that the city can do to make it easier for each demographic, you know, like, all your, all your older people, they're going to still want that newsletter. Now, whether that's possible right now or not financially, who knows? But they're going to want that paper copy, right? Some of the people my age and younger, yeah, you want to get something in an email or, you know, a, a quick video on Instagram or Facebook, whatever, whatever it is, you know? And those are things, those are things that shouldn't be a heavy lift and can be done where you're kind of meeting people where they are. And then it gives, it gives y'all the fallback of saying, well, did you not see it here? Or here? Or here? Or here? You know, not just, not just, well, there's an email list you sign up for and we, we don't advertise that you can get on this email list to get an agenda and get that, you know? And that's kind of the way things have been. And it shouldn't be. Like, I point to Homewood all the time, and I'm sure other cities do this, too. But I really like the way Homewood does it, where agendas are, obviously, they're, they're printed online. You can go download the PDF well in advance of the meeting. So you know what they're going to talk about. And it's not just the city council stuff. Like, you've got the P and Z ones. I mean, you, you know how, I don't want to use the word lax. You know how laid back our historical can, can be? Because you're the liaison to it. Like, our meetings are pretty laid back. But Homewood, hey, their historical commission, there's an agenda right there, you know? And I would love to see us get to that point, where if someone does complain about lack of communication, quote unquote, it's really on you because you didn't look. You know what I mean?
Yeah. And you know who I think is doing a great job of that is Dr. Martin School.
Sure.
I have.
Chad, Chad Summers is doing a really great job with him, too.
Chad Summers. Hi, Chad Summers. If you're watching this, you're doing a great job, because you really are. Because you get the in the loop, you get, you get videos on social media where the majority of young parents and parents in general with kids, with school age kids are. And, but then you also get the email with the in the loop. And then you get all of the, you know, the, the, again, not just a post, but a video and an explanation and a link and, you know, whatever you need. And then still, you can still go to the school board buildings and still hear stuff in person. So, no, I think they're doing a great job. And I think this next administration, however it forms up, well, that is something that really, they're going to have to think about and that I would, if I'm reelected, will absolutely be, be thinking about. Because that is going to be key to get out in front of, of things. Let people know, especially if it's not good news, especially. I don't know when we're ever going to learn this lesson, that the quicker you can get the bad news out there and be straight up with people, the quicker you can get to a solution. And then it builds trust. And so that's what I think of when I, when I, when people ask for transparency, I think, hey, tell them, tell them the straight skinny, what is going on as much as you can, as much as you legally can. And to be fair, there is a lot more legally that we cannot say in public.
True.
One-on-one that I, that I knew about. And that's watching my dad be, you know, I thought I knew some things coming in, in 2020. I did not realize. I really did not realize how quiet you kind of have to be about, about things until they are discussed at the council meeting. And that is the way it's got to go, because you open yourself up to, let me back up, because usually every decision has somebody on this side and somebody on this side. And so you've got to toe the line. You have got to walk the line. And you cannot give either side an opportunity to say that they didn't get a fair shake, or this was already pre-planned, or you already came to a decision, so why did you have us come up here? We, we need, we absolutely have to follow the rules in that. And that means that we have to take a lot of criticism because of the lack of information that, that gets out and when it gets out. And so I, I do understand that. And so that is another, I think that's another tidbit, I guess, if the, the folks running for council were to ask me, hey, what should I watch out for? Well, you should probably go to amazon.com, just joking, buy your Thick Skin Local, wherever you can find it, because we need the sales tax. But you should probably look into getting a Thick Skin, seriously. Because you'll have people that have known you your whole life, suddenly decide that you yourself have determined that people should drive 100 miles an hour on their road.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just giving you an example. Do you know what I mean? Like, it won't matter what you say or what you do, or how, you know, that you yourself have determined that, that you personally cleared all those trees and left that big mess on the side of Highway 11. How dare you?
What is that gonna be, by the way?
That is.
You can't say it?
That is the kind of stuff, that's the kind of stuff I'm talking about, right? So it's just, it's one of those things where the dynamic is so different now in this race. And it's weird. It's a little odd to me. I don't want to say weird, but it's a little odd to me that I am the only incumbent running, because for, for council seat, right? Obviously, Ben and Lisa are running for mayor, but they're in a different, they're in a different zone. And, and here I am by myself, trying to just make the case to the people of Trustful that, hey, no matter how you feel about me, the one thing I have that no one else has running for council is recent council experience in Trustful. That is what I have that no one else has, is recent council experience in the city of Trustful. That is, that's what I bring to the table. Now, if you do think you need a clean slate, I, this is, this is city elections and I, I won't take it personally at all. I just, that's the, that's the case I'm making to the people of Trustful, is that I will defend every single vote I've made. I actually went through and looked at all of them to make sure that I remembered way back in 2020 and 21, what I had voted for and why. And that's what YouTube has made very nice, is that you can go back and actually see the discussion, who voted yes and no on things. So I absolutely will defend my voting record and that experience, that five years of experience, I would love to, I would love to serve again and, and actually bring that to the new council and support our new mayor.
I know you said it was an easy decision to, to run again. And, you know, I, I get that. So if that's the answer to this, that's fine. Was there ever a moment when, when things were hard these last few months, where you were just like, I don't, like, I'm not saying you were like, all right, I'm out. But like, was there ever a moment where you questioned yourself? Or, you know, is this the best route for me right now? You know? Was there ever a moment like that? Or was it still full steam ahead?
I mean, you know, I, I would be lying if I said there were days that challenged my resolve to serve. I'll put it that way. Okay. But everybody has challenging days. Everybody has a day where everything piles on and you feel like you've not done anything well. And you, you're, you get in your own head and you feel like, nobody's noticed anything I've done. Nobody cares. Nobody, you know, that is not true. That is not true. I remind myself often. And look, I'll show you. This is on my fridge. Hold on. Stay there. I have two things on my fridge. One is this letter. The other is Allison Anderson's presidential honor roll letter from the, you know, the University of Alabama, saying that she made the president's list. Congrats, Allison. So I hung that up because, super proud, right?
Yeah.
There's this. So of all the things left in our boxes, and Gary, I mean, like, we get anonymous letters from people that are so horrible.
I know.
That you're just like, man, are, are you okay? You know what I mean? You just want to be like, are you all right? Like, do we need to send somebody to help you? Okay.
Yeah.
But then you get this. And I hung it, I hung it on my, on my fridge. It's three pages. And I'm not even going to read it, because I'll get emotional. But it's a city called Trustful. And it talks about how thankful this person is for everything that's happened over the last couple of years. How even though they don't recognize this town, but to be the small sleepy town that we grew up in. And I, I am in that mix, right? I remember all left our doors open and we rode bicycles till, you know, not, I mean, you know, and everybody does that now, too. But like, when everybody. we rode bicycles till, you know, not, I mean, you know, and everybody does that now too, but like when everybody knew everybody, right? Literally it felt like everybody knew everybody. But they go and list education, business and shopping opportunities, religious and personal growth opportunities, protection, talking about public safety and, and the future and, and our community and how this place is special. I love it.
How, how, how long's it been on your fridge?
Since the day I took it out of my box. So.
How long ago was that?
I, I will, it's, I mean, you know, it's pretty, I would say probably sometime last year.
Wow.
I guess maybe, or maybe a year and a half.
No, that, that, that helps.
It's not moot because.
Well, I'm, I'm a, I'm a details guy and that helps with context. Like it's like, this did not happen this week, like a year and a half. It's been there. That's.
No, a year and a half and in all bold, bold print. I don't know if you see it. It says, we appreciate you. And I, that's the page I have it. I'm gonna go put it back. But that's the page that I took it off the fridge now because there are some days that you think to yourself.
Yeah.
This, you know, not that it's not worth it. It is always worth it. It is just that you think to yourself, n- nobody sees me. No.
What, what am I doing this for? Yeah.
What? Yeah. I've missed, uh, you know, I have six, uh, committees, right? So, uh, you know, I've missed another dinner. Or I, you know, I, I was late to another thing or whatever, or I, you know, I went and stood in someone's, you know, went and visited them to make sure that the lights of the new ER weren't shining into their, you know, kitchen or whatever. You know what I mean? Like things where like only that person sees it or that's not something that you post on Facebook. And those are a million little acts of service, but to get a letter and this one was anonymous, which I don't.
I was gonna ask.
Uh, yeah, I don't normally put a lot of stock in anonymous letters really unless they're full of facts. And this one is full of facts. And so, and, and it's great because that person is saying, uh, they, they literally are pointing out all the wonderful things about Trustful and saying thank you because they understand that it is the daily grind of a mayor and city employees and i- in a part-time capacity, a council to keep things going. And, and the, the whole goal is that you don't even know we're here, right? That you just get up and you have wonderful quality of life and you love living here and your water tastes great. And your roads are, you know, a pothole didn't bust your tire today. And y- you're loving the greenways and you're going and enjoying the library and you're enjoying the civic center with your kids and you went to the new fields and you're loving that and you go to a ballgame. You're not even thinking about the mayor and council and all the city employees that make that happen, right? That's the goal. That's the goal. And so
Yeah.
That is, when you say, did I, did I think at any point, like in the last couple of months when it got a little loud? Like is this, has this been worth it? Um, I, I'd lie if I say I didn't, but then I, I quickly remind myself like it's not about, i- i- it's not about being validated or me getting something out of it. It's about serving others. It, that is the bottom line. It is about, it is literally about protecting life, providing essential services and, and serving. That is it. It is to make people love to live here and not even you know, not even think about things, right? That, that they just, they just happen. They're just there. And I know right now we've got so many challenges with things far out of our control, like hi, why don't you shut down, you know, an on-ramp to a major interstate during an election month? That would, that's super fun.
Or, 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 or right before school starts, you know?
Or right before school starts or you know, whatever. But hmm, I am really, I'm, I'm, I'll say it again. I'm, I was so honored to have served with Alan and Perry and Ben and Lisa and uh, with Mayor Choate and Stacy Frazier and everybody. Dan has been fantastic. Everybody down at City Hall. All the city employees, they are, they are wonderful people and they all love Trustful. And it's, I mean, it really is an honor to serve. It's an honor to be on city council. I hope that people have thought that I have conducted myself in a way that brings, you know, brings honor to the city and that doesn't embarrass them that I'm their representative. And so I want to continue that. Um, and I hope they give me that chance on August 26th. Vote for Jamie, place three.
Let me ask you this, uh, cause this, uh, we're, yeah, wait, it's Thursday. My days are mixed up. Um, the Deerfoot land, the 1300 acres, can you explain that to me? Like what? Where, well, maybe not necessarily where it is. 1300 acres is a, a lot, but like it goes to Trustful Gas and Water? Right?
They are purchasing it from the city. Yes.
So they've purchased it. Does the city then like, because it's like, it's not like you sold it to a development group, you know? You sold it to Trustful Gas and Water. Does the city, do you, or do you, I don't know if you can answer this or not, but do you foresee the city being able to still have some say in what happens there? Because Deerfoot is one of the last big development, you know, there, there are still trees there, Jamie. Um, the, is that one of the, I wore the wrong stuff tonight. I just got trees all over, but is, uh,
I love it. I, more, more trees, I say.
Yeah. I mean, will the city, even though they've now sold that or are selling that? I don't know if it's gone through or what, but will the city still have some control or some say or what?
Uh, um, no, the land will belong to the utilities board. It is, it will be, it will be, it will be preserved. It's, it's saved.
So that's, so that's, that's, that's what the utilities boards, that's why they bought it then. I mean, it helps y'all get out of, you know, put you back in the black. That's number one.
But no, well, no, number one is, number one for the utilities board is they are always looking for new sources of water to, to recharge.
Close to those headwaters, right?
So, well, they're, they are always looking for different places where they can, that they can, um, they can test for wells and see if they can draw water. And I do not wanna speak out of school on this. Um, actually Mike Strength and the mayor did a great job. I would refer you back to the Trustful Unscripted that they did a couple of weeks ago. Um, where they came on and explained exactly what was, they actually gave a great history of the land and how it was acquired by the city. And you know, went to the utilities. At that time, nothing was found. The city bought it back. Now utilities has it again. They, you know, that is, they did the best explanation and I want you to hear it from the mayor and from, um, Mike Strength. But the bottom line is, is that the, the, um, this preserves the, the land. It is, it is a win-win in a big way.
That's, that's awesome. Love some, love some preservation, you know that.
Oh, a hundred percent. And, and you just think about it and Mike Strength actually mentioned it and I'm paraphrasing. I'm not quoting him, but he said, you know, there was a time when people wanted to cut the tops off of that. Think, think like Highland Lakes and put 350 homes up there. And what that would do ecologically to the Kahaba River and the runoff is that, I mean, don't get me started. But yes, that would be not great, right? That is not, that is not the, the, the highest and best use for that land. And as long as, um, the city and or the utilities is able to control that, that is what is gonna be best for the people of Trustful long-term because, um, I'm sure everyone knows and hopefully they do that the Kahaba River is a jewel and it needs to be preserved and cleaned and taken care of. And, uh, we have groups in Trustful that do a wonderful, wonderful job of that, but you also want that to be in the forefront of your mayor and your council. That the more green space we can preserve, the more parks we can provide, the more outdoor space that we can have, that only adds to quality of life. In no equation ever did less parks, less green space, uh, and less, you know, nature preserves make people more sad. You know, like that's not an equation. It's the opposite. So,
Yeah.
Um, and I'll, I'll go ahead and mention, you know, we want to, there, there was talk and we're still working on it. We wanna preserve those trees around the, um, around the, uh, Methodist church, the little white church as you're coming into Trustful. Think about, I mean.
Oh, the Presbyterian church.
Oh, the Presbyterian church. I'm sorry. Not Methodist. Absolutely, absolutely.
Cross from Nebo. Yeah, yeah.
Cross from, across from Mount Nebo Cemetery. Yep. We would love to preserve all of that, all those caves back there, the topography that goes down to Pinch Gut. Um, that would be something that I would, again, I'm one of five and we're following the mayor, but given the opportunity, that's something that I would absolutely want to do. Preserve all of that.
Well, that could eventually be part of Greenway Extension though too, right?
A hundred percent.
Yeah. I mean, that, that, that seems like the, the thought process already, if I'm not mistaken.
Oh, that's right. And I think part, parts of it were laid out in the 2040 plan. So, yeah.
Yeah. That would be good. That would be good. It's weird back there. I just had a video come out today about that cave. It's weird back there. Cause every time I've gone, I've gone by myself and it's like a little creepy. And then, I don't know. It's creepy, but it's beautiful, but creepy. Um, I wanted to ask you, uh,
It is, keep in mind though, that it is private property.
You don't know when I was back there?
I don't. But I, look, if you wanted to cut this part out, I totally would understand and would not have a problem with it because yeah, I, yeah.
The, nobody called Chief Rush on me. I'm just doing historical things.
Oh, you sound like me when I was, uh, when I talked about your book the other night. I was like, I didn't tell anybody I was gonna do this.
Yeah. Oh, I'm not gonna cut it out at all. Just, hey, nobody come get me. I'm not, if it, I'm not, I'm not leaving anything. Just taking some pictures of the woods and making videos about the history. That's all. I'll, I'll ask for forgiveness and not for permission. I didn't jump any fences. I just went down a hill. That's all I did.
You can definitely cut this out.
I lost, I lost my train of thought because I got on the history thing, but you were talking about providing like more park spaces, more nature preserves that you can do, that kind of thing. Where is, where is the balance with that? Like, I know, like, okay, there's been a lot of development, of course, and you know, light industry and, you know, different just businesses, development, that kind of thing. I get it. And I get that, that you need that. I do. Like you can't survive in a way without it. But I've also heard from a lot of people that like, you know, they look at playgrounds, for instance, and I know, I know of people, heck, I've done it too, that take their kids to different cities because for what Trustful is and as big as Trustful is and some of the things we do have, some of those things don't seem like they've kept up with, you know, something that's over here is at this level. And then something over here is like kind of forgotten about in a way. At least that's the vibe I've gotten from a lot of people. Where, how do you find the balance in that? And you know, kind of make that, i- is that a priority, you know, going forward? The things that don't necessarily make you the money or build up a sales tax base, but that do provide that quality of life that keep people in your city.
Well, no, that's, that's always on the forefront too, right? But I, I would say this next year's budget and maybe for a little more until we can kind of sort things out. Those things might have to take, I mean, the bottom line is, is you cannot, whatever you have, you have to pay for. That inflation has hit everyone. And, and what's crazy is that there's, there is like somehow this notion online that like, because prices have risen and taxes have increased, um, that the city coffers have increased and yet every single thing we have to pay for has also increased, including all of our personal, you know, our personal households, plus every single thing from maintenance to widgets to everything. So we're going and looking where we can, right? Grants to update like the, um, the park behind the library, um, looking to, um, our congressional representatives and Danny Garrett and Shay Schelmert have been fantastic about bringing money here. And you know that you are a recipient of that.
Yeah, we've benefited. Yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, um, and ACT as well. Those are the quality of life, nice to have things that really you do want people to have. And we absolutely need to focus on the maintenance of those things over time and the expansion if possible. But I'm even thinking about like everyone who lives up Roper Road, a Roper Hill, think about, name me one park for any of those people over there. Nothing. Not even like a sidewalk system where they can get down to the entertainment district or anything. So we have to start thinking about like every part of our city and trying to connect it and trying to keep up with not just the infrastructure needs, but like you said, the nice to have stuff, the stuff that makes you wanna live here, go to the parks. Um, uh, you know, I've heard splash pad, I've heard all these things. They all cost money. So there, there are trade-offs with everything. And, um, and I know that this current council, um, our, our priorities have been public safety and schools, um, for sure. And, and then also trying to alleviate a lot of our traffic issues, which that's taken a lot longer than we wanted. I'm, I'm talking about like the loop roads. I mean, a lot of this stuff has been in the works for many years. Um, trying to alleviate the traffic off of 11, which we cannot do anything about. And Chauvin Mount Road, which we cannot do anything about unless we wanna ruin the entire middle of the projects, right? So it's like,
Yeah, please don't.
We have so many constraints and, um, I, you know, I don't have a, I mean, I really don't have a good answer. I would say absolutely it has to be in the forefront. It has to be in the planning of any kind of future endeavor. And we need to, we need to budget for it. We need to be looking at it. And, and we have been. It's just, you know, you can't always have the, the newest, brightest, shiniest thing. And if you want that, you will have to pay for it, right? So that's, that's.
Yeah, I think, yeah. And I think that's just, I think that's been the rub. I'm not, this is not me personally speaking, although some of it might be, but um, I mean, cause I live here too. But I, I think that's probably been, and you know this better than me, but I, I think my thousand foot view is I think that's the rub on people. You know, everybody's gonna bring up gymnastics. Everybody's gonna bring up turfing the fields, even though both of them serve a purpose and both of them are well attended and well used. But they're gonna look at the price tag. That's what they're gonna do. And then you look at other things that are lacking in the city. Like everybody has their priority, right? Like a few years ago, my kid was three years old. My priority was the fact that the, the smaller playground next to the library didn't have a slide for like months. And the slide that it didn't have was the same slide I went down when I was a kid. And you're like, what's that about? We can't, we can't spring for a new slide? Trustful click, come on. You know, so it's like everybody has their priorities. It just feels like those, your, your recreation type things, your quality of life type stuff. The stuff that doesn't make money, your non-business stuff has kind of fallen further behind maybe than it should have, you know? Um, at least that's just the view that I've heard from numerous people and one that, that, you know, with some nuance to it, I somewhat share. You're muted.
Well, that's because my dog started, my husband just got home. So my dog said, we, we're about to be at the end of this podcast because now, now family has, has all come, come home and, um, the dogs are about to talk to us here. But I will say this, um, comparison is the thief of joy. Enjoy what you have. We have things that other cities don't have. We have the greenways. We have the fallen warrior, um, you know, monument. We have, we have Pinch Gut. We have the entertainment district. We have, we have parks. We have fields. We, I mean, we have so much to be grateful for and thankful for. It is so easy to look over at the next city and say, wh- what do they have? Well, they might pay for garbage. I mean, like, I, ask yourself that. I mean, really, they might not, they might not give a whole penny of their sales tax to the schools.
Right.
They might still be in Jefferson County schools and they don't have to pay for their school system. Do you know what I mean? Like there's trade-off. So I would even say there are so many positive things. Comparison is the thief of joy. I hope people love Trustful as much as I do. I want to improve it. If I had a magic wand, I would, we would want to do all the things all the time, but don't be shocked at this. Even if we had a magic wand and endless amounts of money, do you not know that there would be competing viewpoints, locations? How are we gonna do this? What is it gonna look like? Why does it look like this? Why is it this big? Why isn't it small? What, you know, what? Why, you know, why isn't it smaller? Wasn't it taller? Think about that, right? It would still, all the money in the world would not solve the problem of like comparing or, or being dissatisfied or thinking that you don't have enough of something. Um, I would just point people back to all the wonderful things that we do have in the city. And if they need to borrow my anonymous four-page letter that's on my fridge, I'm happy to, I'm happy to make copies. You know what is funny? Now that I think about it, I think I might actually take pictures of it and post it online. I don't know how much people read, but this is worth reading and, um, I might actually do that. This, Trustful is such a wonderful place to live. I would love to have the opportunity for another four years to try to, to keep it that way and to make it that much better.
Yeah. Well, let's wrap this up because your dogs are gonna go crazy. Mine's gonna, mine's in the room. He's gonna go crazy if I don't take him for a walk. And he needs it because he's post ACL surgery. So we gotta build up that strength. So. Yeah, he's, he's. Yeah, he's, he's, he's highs and lows right now, but, um, I'm curious just to kind of, kind of put a bow on this thing. Just, I mean, we've kind of talked about the, what's important moving forward, that, that kind of thing. Um. Do you feel any different responsibility if you are reelected, being the only incumbent? Like, like there, there are ways that this could go that like. If Wayne Taylor's elected, well, he's done it before. He just, it's been a while. Same thing for Anthony Montalto. So that wouldn't be, if they were elected, it wouldn't be like, uh, you're totally on an island with the only one with experience. But do you feel a weird kind of way as the only incumbent at all?
Um, no, I mean, not really. I, what, what I would say is that I very much want to offer the support. The same support and, um, encouragement and education that was afforded to me by, um, Perry and Alan. And the mayor, um. That I, 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 again, I, I, I said this in twenty twenty and I, and I mean it with my whole heart. I do not have an agenda. I do not have an axe to grind. I do not, I specifically waited for an open spot to even run for council. When Jeff Freeman decided not to run, I did not want to challenge anyone. Do you know what I mean? Like, I, I had no major complaints. I do not have an agenda. My agenda is literally serve Trustful the very best that I can. And do as much good for as many people for as long as I can. That's it. And so what that means to me as far as. Uh, if I, if, uh, if I am reelected, my obligation to the other four counselors is to share what I know. Be open and honest and transparent with them about the challenges and, um, any lessons learned that, that, you know. That I know will help them, that I wish I had known going in and, um, to make myself available to them, just like I do. Uh, and by the way, speaking to all the candidates, anyone can call me anytime, right? Three one eight two nine four five nine seven six. Um, same way I make myself available to anybody in Trustful who, who needs help or, or wants advice. I won't give unsolicited advice, but if you ask me, I'm happy to help with whatever. So. I guess that's the only responsibility I guess I feel is that, um. Is that I want them to succeed. I want whoever the people of Trustful want to lead them as mayor. And whoever they want to represent them on council, I want all of those people to succeed. And, and that includes even if it's not me. And if it is me, I will still carry that forward, um, into the next four years. And, um, and try to, to continue to learn, be a lifelong learner and, um, share what I know. That's really all I can do.
Yeah. This one feels like, I don't know, whether it be true or not, I mean, things have at least kind of. In a way died down from the last couple of months, you know, like the sky wasn't falling. Was it, was it great? No. Was it, was it horrendous? Also no, you know, like as usual, like I kind of, I try to kind of live in the gray. Of things like I wasn't on team black, I wasn't on team white, just kind of see both sides in the middle, you know, a little bit. Um, but it, but it does in a weird way feel like a, a, a huge moment for Trustful, I guess. Like, I mean, kind of because we're, we're definitely gonna have four new council people, uh, potentially five. And we're definitely gonna have a new mayor and it does seem like we'll see how, if, if this stuff sticks or not. But it does seem like there's a lot more civic participation, um, a lot more opinions, a lot more people paying attention to things. Now, I think that probably will also die down because I've covered this place long enough to see it where it's just. I've, I've, I've seen the council meetings where things blow up and, you know, where, you know, the fire marshals get, uh, in there counting heads. But then I've also seen the very next week where me and Richard Epstein and the department heads are the only ones there. I've seen that too.
That's right.
So, you know, uh, I, I hope that it at least enlightens people and they actually pay attention. Um, and I hope the city from its standpoint has learned and will learn, you know, more about. Uh, effective proactive communication as well. Um, I think those are. I, I, I think you cut a lot of problems off at the head if you have proactive, effective communication. Um.
A hundred percent.
Last, last question, then we'll, we'll kill this thing. Um, how ready are you for August the twenty seventh?
Oh, don't ask me what, look, how much time do we have? I'm so ready. I'm so ready. And also for the record, dear people of Trustful, I apologize for political signs everywhere. They are horrendous.
Yes. I was, I, I literally, I said, I said last.
Stand them. I think they are ridiculous and I'm so sorry that that is the way that the things have gone. And I, but I want you to know sincerely to all my supporters, if you've asked for a sign in your yard, God bless you and thank you for your support. But, oh, I cannot wait to come pick it up out of your yard. I'm serious. I think it junks up our town. I, I'm so sorry, but yeah, so August twenty seventh, that will, I will probably take a day of PTO. Win, lose or indifferent, just to make sure that my signs are, are not anywhere in the city of Trustful. In twenty-four hours after this election is over and I'm not even watching, so.
Like, like, I don't think, like, I'm not one who just wants to like react to something and then make a law because of it. Or, you know, or a rule or whatever, but like, but like, I wish there was a way, at least this year, you know, where you're just seeing it constantly. And then you see where one candidate will find a spot that hasn't been touched yet and the next day the other candidate has one right beside it, you know? And you're like, oh my God. But I wish there was a way to only have. Political signs on your private property, like in your lawn. Like, I wish you couldn't do it on the right-of-way. Then I'd be, then I'd be fine. The right-of-way is insane.
I cannot believe you last, l- left this for the last question. I, so many things to say on this. I'm gonna.
You brought, you brought it up.
No, I, did I though? Did I? Oh, oh, I did, because you said, are you ready for the twenty-seventh? And the only thing I can think of is how fast can I get those signs out of my city? How fast can I stop junking up my hometown, right? Like, that is the only thing I could think of. And some of the candidates, if I, 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 I take it back. I told a fib tonight. I said I would give no unsolicited advice. Here is the unsolicited advice for anyone who's willing to listen. Stop, stop violating the rules. We have a sign ordinance. Stop it. Stop attaching your signs to actual. Physical items where I know somebody put their self in jeopardy to put that sign up there for you. Quit it.
I've, so.
Stop putting it in fields where I, when I call the owner of the field to talk to them or whatever about putting their sign, they say. I don't know why that person's sign is in there. I don't know that person. They've never called. I do not understand y'all. It is city council and mayor. Like, let's act right, like act right about your signs, like.
So like, I've, I've thought about this almost every day this, this summer. If, i- any day I'm out of the house driving. I just haven't really verbalized it. Maybe I've said it to Jessica, maybe. But I would love, I would have loved. When I say loved, I think it would have been funny. I don't think I would have been thrilled to do it. I just think the end product would have been hilarious. If all these people who were putting out their signs, and I know some of y'all put them out yourself. I know some people have volunteers or spouses and, you know.
I have one. I want to give a shout out to Cindy Underwood. Thank you, Cindy. Cindy Underwood and I are the only ones that put out Jamie Melton Anderson signs. I'm sorry to interrupt Gary.
No, you're good. So like, I would love, especially those that you're talking about where you're, you look at them where they're at and you're like. I mean, not only how, but like why? Like, I've seen some spots where I'm like, okay, it's summer. And to put that where you did, I know you're not going into that spot wearing shorts. Like, you're wearing, like, you're, you're, you've got to be wearing boots and long pants and it's a hundred degrees outside. And I would lo- I would have loved to follow around all these people with a, with a camera and. Video and document like, I want to see, like, I, like, I don't want them to get hurt, but I, I want to see them fall down trying to do this. And like how they got to these places, because I think it would make just tremendous political satire.
Look, I don't want anybody to get hurt. I wish no ill will on anyone. I, I just think the signs have gotten out of control. And like clearly people have just blatantly ignored the rules. They have flown in the face of the actual sign ordinance. They are putting stuff in places where they know that the owner doesn't live in the city. They'll probably never see it. I've had that suggested to me. I refuse. If you see my sign somewhere that it does not belong. Call me again, three one eight two nine four five nine seven six and report it to me because I will go pick it up. I just. There's just no reason for it. And, uh, but anyway, yes, I am very much ready for August twenty-seventh. And that is actually the day that I can also shut down, uh, my website, jamiemeltonanderson.com. If you want to know more about my campaign or me as a person or my, my views about the city, please go to jamiemeltonanderson.com. Before August twenty-seventh, cause it will be no more on that day.
Sounds good. We'll end, we'll end it right there. That's, that, there, there's your little PSA for the end of this thing. I appreciate you taking the time to do this.
Yes, thank you, Gary. I appreciate you being patient with me. Uh, you know that, um. In a, like a personal way and with some family things that we've had a lot going on. And so thanks so much for being patient. Uh, I, I told you I'd get here and, um, and it's, it's finally happened. So just a few more weeks. We'll figure it out. But I guess I will see you, um, I will actually see you when? August the sixth?
I don't know.
I don't.
I don't remember. I don't know. I, it's in the planner somewhere. Whenever the next, yeah, oh, oh, you're talking about. Yeah, August fifth.
Yes, okay.
Fifth. I sent out the reminder text to everybody today. We'll see. Hopefully everybody shows.
Yes, nope. And I will see you on August fifth. Thanks so much for the opportunity. I appreciate you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
See ya.